Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to apologize first. Mayor Hamilton is ill today and not able to attend. I will be chairing as acting mayor. And councillor Martin is out of town on business. So, having said that, I will call the meeting of Callwood Council for April 27th to order. First item is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor, opposed, carried. Item two is public participation. Now is your time to address council about any item regarding city business or on the agenda. This will be your only opportunity to address items on the agenda as, once we get into council discussion, public participation is closed. So, having said that, if you have comments, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and make your comment. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Carrie Arnott. I live at 3667 Seashell Place. Behind me are the neighbors of the Royal Bay Bluffs. So, mayor and council, a 16-foot-tall retaining wall has been constructed at 3672 Seashell, and I believe that I can speak for the whole neighborhood when we say we want it removed. The builder constructed boulder retaining walls on the municipal statutory rights-of-way for the municipal sanitary sewer and storm drain in direct -- whoops, sorry, let's go back, I'm nervous. The builder constructed boulder retaining walls on the municipal statutory rights-of-way for the municipal sanitary sewer and storm drain in direct contravention of the City of Callwood Sewer and Drain Bylaw 1500.2011. Municipal sanitary sewer and storm drain cleanouts were lifted and inspection chambers were buried on the same City of Callwood right-of-way. To date, nothing has occurred to mitigate the situation. The lot has been filled and the building site prepared based on the main floor elevation higher than permitted by the City of Callwood Development Variance Permit 09-07, and to date, we have received no acknowledgement that their proposed main floor elevation violates that DVP. One might say, "We're wondering if this is stonewalling." Contrary to the statutory billing scheme of the neighborhood stipulated in a covenant with the City of Callwood registered on all the lots on Seashell, there was no approval from the schemes administrator obtained prior to submitting the permit. There has been a 16-foot-high reinforced concrete retaining wall built which has offended the neighborhood. It was not shown on the plans submitted for building permit and the footings report prior to submitting any plans for the wall. This wall violates the letter and the spirit of the statutory building scheme and is contrary to the theme and character of the neighborhood. We want it removed. We feel that the intent of the building scheme and the development variance permits have been thwarted by the City of Callwood. They have not enforced their covenants and even their own DVPs and bylaws. The developer has shown no interest in enforcing this building scheme. To prevent this from happening over and over again on the newly purchased lots on Seashell and Pelican, we ask that the development variance permits 09-07 and 14-013 be rescinded. Lots in question are steep lots. DVP 09-07 was an agreement between the City of Callwood and the developer to lift these houses up out of the ravine, making it easier for building. This DVP permitted reduced setbacks and increased building heights, but these concessions were given on the clear understanding that the building scheme would be enforced. This has not been the case with Lot 31 on Seashell Place. Rescinding the DVPs would require the builders on the remaining lots to work with the neighborhood. Please help us preserve the quality and the character of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councillors, my name is Tony Maud. I live in 421 Pelican Drive, and we will be the unhappy recipients of the view that will be left when the wall that is currently being built, and if it's repeated on the other three lots, we'll be looking at a sheer concrete face of perhaps 40 feet high. It's not acceptable. If you look at the standards that have been built elsewhere in Royal Bay, retaining walls have been staggered, room left for landscaping, and it's a beautiful subdivision. And this is the first home that's being constructed that we see that hasn't, in fact, met the standards either of the covenant, the Lehigh Covenant, or in fact, it violates the OCP standard. And I've gone through the OCP, and people have told me that it doesn't apply to subdivisions. Well, houses are part of a subdivision. I just don't believe that. And then if you look at the OCP, the examples there of houses that follow the contours of the land, you know, this is the vision that the OCP addresses, and it's to the credit of Callwood City. So I have some questions about the process that's going on, and I don't necessarily expect any answers tonight, but certainly I'll be passing questions on to council for their replies, hopefully. The first question is, why was the building permit issued without a landscape plan? The plans that were submitted for the variance, for the side offset from next door, showed, in fact, a sloped lot around the house. The house would typically be built with the foundations, with the footings and the foundation walls backfilled, and then the landscape would follow after that. In this case, the whole elevation of the lot has been lifted some 16 feet. It violates the OCP. It said, "Let's follow the contours of the land." We know that there are going to be retaining walls. That's not the issue. Sorry, there are going to be footings and support for the house. That's not the issue. It's the retaining wall that has failed to meet any standard that pertains to date in Royal Bay. So why was the building permit issued without a landscape plan? Secondly, why and when did the city decide not to liaise with Lehigh about the building scheme in the Royal Bay Bluffs? All the houses have been built, and we've spoken to people that have built houses recently in Royal Bay, and they've said, "There was no question. We wanted to follow the standard." They weren't, in fact, forced by Lehigh or the city, but they met the standards, so the city never had to intervene. In this particular case, either the city or Lehigh, whoever holds the covenant right now, this is the first one that has failed to meet the standard. We'd like to know why. The house plans submitted for the permit and the newest variance clearly indicate following the land course. I think I've already covered that. This has substantially changed. The whole lot has been elevated. Who authorized this? If this was not authorized, who enforces this as it lies in the face of the vision of the OCP? When was the permit issued for the large retaining wall? Why wasn't the neighborhood given the chance to meet and discuss the implications of this on the sightlines? It is absolutely ugly. In the meetings we held with the City of Callwood and the Neighborhood Committee, we were told that a survey was to be completed that afternoon. This is for the height issue of the final roofline of the house that's being constructed. There's some indication, strong indication, in fact, that the fill, that the footings would be placed on, is significantly too high, and that would bring the house up. We believe it could be as much as two and a half to five feet higher than the building permit allows. We asked the city staff to provide us with an elevation of the existing fill at that meeting, which was what, a week? We were told, the exact words were, "It's happening right now." We have not received any report back on what that elevation is. The city seemed to, or rather, the work is on stop, so we're trying to find out whether or not, who's put a stop on the work. This is important to us. We want the height regulated per the building permit. What is the official status of the job at present? It's on stop. It has been for the best part of a week. So somebody has put a stop on the job. We don't know whether it's the owner, whether it's the builder, whether it's the council or the staff. We just don't know. We would like to know what the status of the building is. And the city's really created a breach of trust with our neighborhood, frankly. We'd like to know what the plan is to fix this, and why is this the first house in Royal Bay that seems not to have received approval from Lehigh or the city with reference to the OCP and with reference to the covenant that guided the design, particularly the landscape? The house itself, we don't particularly care what it's like. It's the landscaping, it's the damage that's been done to the house at the neighborhood. We invite you to take a drive up Pelican Drive, take a look at what the damage that's been done to the neighborhood, or to the neighboring house anyway, or the landscaping, I should say. So that's about all for me. What do we want out of this? Well, redesign of the house with the OCP building scheme and covenants covered. I think we're entitled to that, having bought in this beautiful subdivision and expecting that the standards will continue. Bring down the walls to follow the lay of the land, and that's in keeping with the building permit application, and in fact, we believe the building permit that was actually issued. And DVP 09-07 and 14-013 to be rescinded. Those are the things that we want. Thank you.
Any more public participation comments? I understand the mayor and staff and the Neighborhood Association have been meeting on this. What I would like to do is counsel to request staff report back to council at the earliest possible convenience on what the problems are and what the city options are. So if I could get a motion to that effect. Any discussion? I will call the question on that. All in favor, opposed, carried unanimously. So hopefully, we can get back to you as soon as possible on this issue. Next on the agenda is mayor's message. As I said, the mayor isn't here, so I will be delivering her items for her. "April 28th has been chosen by WorkSafe BC in partnership with the BC Federation of Labor and Business Council as the national day of mourning for these victims of workplace accidents and disease. It is a day to remember the sacrifice workers have been forced to make in order to earn a living. It is a day to reinforce efforts to secure tighter occupational health and safety standards and more effective compensation. Flags at City Hall and Callwood Fire Rescue will be lowered to half-masks on Tuesday, April 28th, in honor of those who have died or are injured in work-related accidents. Every one of you is encouraged to recognize this day, to be mindful of what it signifies, and above all, to work safe." A reminder to council, Wednesday, May 6, 2015, is McHappy Day, and members of council are invited to participate in this event at the McDonald's located at 1742 Island Highway in Callwood. Please contact Mayor Hamilton to let her know you are interested. I believe that is all for the mayor's comments. Yes, that's the next item. So the next item is changes in appointments to standing committees. On behalf of Mayor Hamilton, please be advised that effective today, April 27, 2015, Mr. Shaun Eden's appointment to the Planning and Land Use Committee is rescinded, and Mr. Eden is now appointed to serve as a member of the Transportation and Public Infrastructure Committee. And Mr. Gibbs Small's appointment to Transportation and Public Infrastructure Committee is rescinded, and Mr. Smith Small is now appointed to serve as a member of the Planning and Land Use Committee. Essentially, they're creating jurisdictions. Staff are asked to ensure changes are made to the committee listings and website, and that the individuals and committee members are made aware of these changes. And that is all. Thank you. Next on the agenda is 4.1.1, adoption of the regular meeting of council, April 13th. There are a couple of minor changes to that. First, on page, for council, on page 19 of the minutes, there are a list of grants and aid. One of them was inadvertently omitted, was a grant and aid to the Rotary Club of Callwood of $1,500. So the grants and aid should now have 19 bullets, with 17 being Fort Rod Hill, 18 being the Rotary Club and its grant, and 19 being your literacy connection. There are also a couple of small text changes on item three. It states, "Mayor Hamilton noted that Callwood with-host the Pinty Curling Grand Slam. It should be will-host." And the item on parking says, "The comment related to parking was about overflow parking, but parking in general," it was not about overflow parking, but parking in general. I may have motion to adopt the minutes as amended.
So moved.
Any discussion? Called question, all in favor, opposed, carried. Adoption of the minutes of the public hearing of April 13th, 2015.
Move adoption?
Any discussion? Called question, all in favor, opposed, carried. Receipt of the minutes of the report of the public hearing for bylaws 1553 and 1554 of April 13th. The intermunicipal advisory committee on disability issue minutes for October 16th. Same committee minutes of February 19th. And I see I have 4.2.3 and 4.2.4 are the same items? Oh, AGM minutes, I am sorry, right. The Disability Issues Committee, AGM minutes of February 19th, and Protective Service Committee minutes of March 11th. May I have a motion? Moved, second, all in favor, opposed, motion is carried. No correspondence requiring council direction. We move on to new business. Finance and Administration Committee, a verbal report from the CAO on status update on strategic planning process. Proposed date and next steps.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I have had some conversations with the mayor regarding this matter, and it's something that she and council indicated to me that they wished us to move forward on. And it relates to a strategic planning process, if you want to call it that. I have had discussions with Tracy Laurenson, who you are familiar with, and I have discussed with her, if subject to council's ultimate approval, of course, a strategic planning session. We've got some proposed dates to do that. The, what we're talking about, and again, I have discussed this with the mayor, who seems somewhat supportive of it, would be an evening session on a Wednesday for a couple of hours, followed by an all-day session on a Thursday for about five to six hours. And there are a couple of date options. Wednesday evening, May 20th, and Thursday, May 21st. The following week would also be a possibility, but it is getting somewhat late into the annual report process, and it would be nice to have this session done sooner rather than later because the inputs from that session would be somewhat important for completion of the annual report. I'm recommending that all members of council attend and the leadership team, essentially the same group of players from staff who attended the session, I understand, in January. And the objective really, as I see it, would be, and you can use the word strategic planning, but I prefer to use the words, project planning, major deliverables. Essentially, what I would propose that we talk about would be the status of 2014 strategic priority projects, the ones that council is certainly familiar with. That could be the focus of the Wednesday night session, when staff could give council a comprehensive update in terms of where you're at with your 2014 projects. Then on the following day, we discuss the 2015 strategic priorities to be endorsed by council. Any other major projects staff are working on that aren't strategic priorities, per se, that are identified in your report, but certainly major projects that staff are working on or are proposed, or have been requested by council previously, that, you know, are seen to potentially consume a fair chunk of staff resources. We'd also talk about any new initiatives council wishes to raise. You're newly elected, you haven't had that opportunity yet, so anything that you would propose that isn't otherwise in your strategic priorities and planning documents, anything you wish to raise during the course of your mandate. We'd also talk about strategic priorities or major projects to be reprioritized, perhaps dropped. That's unlikely, but again, it's a question that needs to be asked. With the ultimate deliverable from this session to be a very tight, comprehensive report, which essentially is a prioritization, a plan of attack for 2015, major projects focused, strategic priorities focused, but also ideally have some recognition of 2016, 17, and 18 because you are elected for a four-year mandate. So if council is agreeable to that general format, and that's why I'm bringing it forward tonight, nothing has been carved in stone. I've just identified some dates when certainly she would be available, Tracy Laurenson. And if all of this sounds generally in accordance with your view of what we should be doing, I would then have a discussion with the management group and essentially be asking each of the departments to bring forward to that session so that Tracy Laurenson is sufficiently briefed in advance and well-prepared. What are the current major strategic priorities and major projects the departments are working on? The timeline, the overall order of magnitude budget, anything that's outside of strategic priorities that they're currently working on or proposed to do? And that would be input into the session, and then Tracy would walk us through some sort of a prioritization process where all of these various inputs would be raised. But at the end of the day, what we would come out with is a, really a prioritization, a work plan for 2015 that would, I think, give the staff a level of assurance that they're on the same page with council, that council has had the opportunity to prioritize those to bring forward any new initiatives that you wish to throw into the mix, and we move on from there. And of course, in the annual report that we have to do for 2014, we also have to identify our goals and objectives for 2015. So this is why I think it's important to have a strategic planning session, call it what you will. It's quite normal for those types of sessions to be held at this time of year. It's great to be able to do it before budget, but, you know, you're elected, you have Christmas, and it's very, very tough to do that sometimes. But I would recommend that this be given a high priority, and we've got a couple of dates that we're prepared to throw out there, so we'd just like some feedback from council as to whether or not those would be agreeable, and hopefully, all members of council could attend. Thank you.
Thank you, and I assume you'll be emailing all of council for their written response on that, for the dates?
We certainly can do.
That would be good, because there are a couple of us missing right now, council today.
On the dates, just a question on my calendar. I may have it wrong, but the 13th is, you were proposing the 13th or the 20th? 20th. Okay, sorry.
2021st.
So, yeah, because it's all day. So the 21st is an IACT meeting in that evening at 7:00. Just, I'm assuming we'll be wrapped up before 7:00?
Yeah, you know, in my experience in doing these types of sessions, what we have in mind is, for the evening session, maybe 6:30 to 9:00, max, with some supper brought in, and then for the all-day session, 9 to about 3:30.
Okay. So that should work with my calendar. That works well with my calendar, too.
Moving on to the bylaw section. First bylaw is bylaw number 1566 for final First bylaw is bylaw number 1566 for final reading, five-year financial plan for the years 2015 to 2019. Motion for adoption?
Second.
Final reading? All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
We're gonna make her sweat.
Next bylaw. It's been a long, hard haul getting that budget ready.
It was awesome.
Bylaw number 1572 for first, second, and third reading. Callwood Sewer Utility Bylaw Number 1500, 2011, Amendment Number Three, Schedule D, Bylaw Number 1572, 2015, 3900-20-sew-14738 for first, second, and third readings. Motion for first?
Move introduction?
All in favor? Opposed? Carried? For second?
Move second.
Any discussion? Called question, all those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Third reading?
Move third. Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Bylaw 1571, first, second, and third reading. Tax rate bylaw, everybody's favorite. Tax rate bylaw number 1571, 2015, 3900-20-tax-1895. We have motion for first reading?
Move introduction, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Second reading?
Move second.
Any discussion? Being none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Third reading?
Move second.
Second by Counselor Chong. All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Bylaw Number 1567, first, second, and third readings. Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw Establishment and Loan Authorization Bylaw Number 698-2011, Amendment Number 26, LAS enlargement for 711 Demel Place. Bylaw 1567, 2015, 3900-20-sew-16793. Motion for first reading?
Move introduction?
The seconder?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried.
Move second.
Seconder? Any discussion? Called question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Third reading?
Move third.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. These go on forever. Bylaw 1568, first, second, and third reading. Callwood West Sewer Local Area Service Establishment and Loan Authorization Bylaw, Number 625, 2001, Amendment 32, LAS enlargement again for 711 Demel Place. Bylaw Number 1568, 2015, 3900-20-sew-16748. Motion for first reading?
Introduction?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried.
Move second.
Seconder?
Second.
Any discussion? Called question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Third reading?
The third.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Bylaw Number 1520, first, second, and third readings. Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw Establishment and Loan Authorization Bylaw Number 598, Amendment Number 18. LAS enlargement for 3360 Wishart Road, Bylaw 1520, 2015, 3900-20-sew-16793. Motion for first reading?
Introduction?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried.
Move second.
Second.
Any discussion? Called question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried, and third reading?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Bylaw Number 1521, first, second, and third readings. Callwood West Sewer, Callwood West Sewer Local Area Service Establishment and Loan Authorization Bylaw Number 625, 2001, Amendment Number 29. LAS enlargement 3360 Wishart Road, Bylaw Number 1521, 2015, 3900-2W-sew-16748.
Repeat that.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Called question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Third?
Third.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, all in favor. Motion is carried. I believe we're done with the in-camera session, so next would be no release of minutes.
Move adjournment.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.